Good evening everyone and we'll start our meeting. This meeting is held in the Rosa Parks High School Auditorium. It's an open session of the Rosa Parks Board of Education held under the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Star-Ledger, local sources, the Home New York Tribune, the Borough Clerics School Offices and the district website. Roll call please. Here.
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 Mr. Fernandez.
Here.
Mr. Trinidad and Fonseca.
Here.
Dr. Kurtzman.
Ms. McFar.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
And Mr. Terrell.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the principle of one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let it be resolved that the Rosa Parks Board of Education meeting hereby convenes to executive session for discussion of the following subjects. Number one, personnel matters. It is anticipated that the executive session will take approximately 30 minutes. The board may take action during the public session. The board shall return to public session following the executive session at approximately 7:00 p.m. The minutes of the executive session shall be released to the public when the reason for the executive session no longer exists. Do I have a motion going to executive?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're in executive. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm usually not in number, was it?
I didn't know if you knew.
No, I didn't, yeah. I did know that, but I thought I...
Oh.
You have a motion to go back in.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. We're back in open. As we move on, at this time, I will open up the public portion for anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on agenda items only. If you do come up, please state your name and address, and you have the opportunity to speak for three minutes. So if anybody would like to come up, please come up. Guess everybody wants to go home early tonight. At this time, I will close the open portion, public participation. Thank you. At this time, we will move right into the principal's report.
Mr. Allen, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Burrito, Mr. Olivardi, Board of Education members, and Roseville Park community. My name is Elise Canau, and I'm the proud principal of Robert Gordon Elementary School. Robert Gordon currently has an enrollment of 302 students. Ninety-two of those students were enrolled this year, forty-four in pre-K, forty-eight in kindergarten through fifth grade. They have come from as close as Union and New York City, and as far as Indiana, Columbia, and Peru. They have enriched our already diverse school student population. We began the school year in September, celebrating 44 students who participated in our sweet success summer reading program. At Robert Gordon, we are passionate about promoting a love of reading. Our students participated in Say Hello Week. We celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month, and we use that as an opportunity to celebrate every student's heritage. Every student participated in a heritage project where they learned and they shared about their family's heritage. In October, we had Picture Day, our annual costume parade, our Fall Festival, the Week of Respect, completed our Start Strong testing, and in our daily announcements honored prominent Italian-Americans for Italian-American Heritage Month. In November, we held parent-teacher conferences, learned about gratitude and Native American heritage. And our entire fifth grade attended the Veterans Day service at the Veterans Memorial Library, where they delivered handmade cards to every veteran there. In December, we learned about holidays from around the world. Our choir and band performed their winter concert. Our PTA organized, I need a deep breath here, a holiday gift shop, holiday class parties, winter grams, a coat drive, a sneaker and sport cleat drive, and our annual kindergarten breakfast and crafts with Santa. A big thank you to all of the hardworking parents who serve on Robert Gordon's PTA. These events that they organize build community within our school, and I like to say that we have a lot of parent power at Robert Gordon. So far this month, we smoothly transitioned to full days. We learned about the contributions of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and are busy planning events for the remainder of the school year. All year long, students participate in our character education program. We are a bucket-filling school, which means each week, teachers acknowledge students for being respectful, responsible, positive, and safe. Every class has visited the Veterans Memorial Library, and any families who did not have a library card had the opportunity to get one during those visits. Parents receive weekly newsletters from myself and their classroom teachers with information on current events and ways to support learning at home. I want to take a moment to extend my gratitude to Ms. Dina Miwad, our school counselor. She is the heart of our school. She keeps us beating. Ms. Kalbaba, who puts together our morning show, which our fifth graders participate in, very similar to the morning show here at the high school, and all the teachers who help make Robert Gordon a place where students can learn and grow. Although I am incredibly proud of everything we have accomplished and everything we're working towards as a school principal, I go to bed every night and wake up every morning thinking about one thing, and that's teaching and learning, about how to support our students' social emotional needs and the learning gaps, the unfinished or interrupted learning from years prior. We have a dedicated group of teachers who work tirelessly to close those gaps. Using our district assessments and with the help of Mr. Salvo and our district coaches, we were able to identify our academically neediest students and provide tier-two and tier-three interventions with just-meets-small-group intervention. We look closely at the data we have from our Lincoln tests and our formative assessments to pinpoint who needs support and where. In November, we were able to offer our neediest first graders after-school support in reading. We are currently offering our ESL students after-school support in language acquisition, and very soon, our second to fifth graders will participate in a standards-based after-school program in language arts and mathematics. In addition to offering our fourth and fifth graders chorus, band, and rich art, we have started a robotics program, after-school program at Robert Gordon that we'll run through May. My hope is that in the spring, when I'm standing here again, we can celebrate the hard work of our teachers and our students' academic growth and performance. So without further ado, I'm going to move on to student recognition. The students I'm here to recognize have shown great responsibility and enthusiasm. They recently organized a holiday food drive and collected over 500 items for the Cassano Center. They brought them over recently. These students are dedicating their time to making this year memorable for all of our Robert Gordon students, and they will most definitely leave a positive impact on our school. It is my great pleasure to recognize Jason Escalante, Student Council President. Brayden D'Amico. Jake Appelo. Tina Alvenga. Mackenzie Benavich. Abigail LaCance. Nicole Torres. And Aiden Vigil.
Just want to say congratulations again to all the students from the Student Council. At this time, if the students would like, and mom and dad would like to take their child home, we'll give you two minutes to walk out the door. All right, great job. Thank you. Damn, that's half the audience. Good night. Thank you. As we move on, committee reports. Anybody have a committee report?
So Aldine was awarded that Character Excellence Award recently, again for another year. They also were put up for national recognition for excellence, so we're very proud of Aldine and can't wait to see if they get their national recognition.
Anyone else have a committee report? I do. Couple of weeks ago, I was, got a phone call inviting me to attend a meeting with the superintendent and the PTOs. It was kind of not shocked, but never happened before, so I went. When I got to the, to the meeting, they handed me a, two, two pieces of paper, and they were full on both sides, and I'm going, wow, this is it. What, what I realized when we were going over, ninety percent of what they had on the agenda, these PTO and PTA presidents had all these things for our children, and, and I was totally impressed again about what these organizations that we have in our schools, what they do for our children. They, they were concerned with this COVID, can they do this, can they do that? They want to do this, they want to do that. And, and the effort they put into what they do for our children, it's, it's amazing. And I just want to say thank you to all the presidents, secretaries, treasurers, vice presidents, whatever is on these committees, and all the parents that participate with these groups. They, they do so much for our children, and, and not having one directly in, I mean, I have grandchildren and stuff, but not being directly involved, you kind of forget what, what these organizations do for our children. So again, thank you. Just one last thing, I would suggest that any parent out there, that whatever school you're in, join up with your PTA or PTO, get involved with them. Maybe you can come up with something different that they can do for the children. So just, just attend one meeting. You might love it. So again, see what you can do with that. If there's no other committee reports, we move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Horns. As I mentioned at the last meeting, tonight, tonight I will be presenting the Star Strong administration. That was, I guess administered back in September, and I want to go over a few things with the board and the public. All right, everyone, as you can see up there, that the 2021 administration of the Star Strong, this is the first time ever. And, and obviously, it, it was, it was done to provide schools with the support in identifying student needs. This is different, and I want you to keep in mind throughout this presentation that this is different than the NJSLA, which is the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, that everyone is used to. Obviously, because of COVID, the past two years, the test was canceled, and they didn't have it. So what the state did is to give districts an opportunity to provide students with the remediation and the support that they need. They came up. So this was, this test is to produce information to be used as a standard-based complement to the resources used by, used by educators. We already have an internal assessment here. It's called Lincoln. We regularly assess students' learning, and this is not in place of that test. This is in addition to the test, so it gives us more information. Don't forget, the NJSLA has more depth. It gives you a report that you can discuss with the teachers, you can discuss in, in school, you can discuss with your children, and it gives you a proficiency level. This test is going to give support levels, not proficiency levels, because this is a one-time test. These were administered quickly, in person, and provided immediate results for the teachers. That was the purpose of this, to do it at the beginning of the year, give immediate results to, for the districts to prepare remediation for the students throughout the year, and that's the rationale behind this test. Okay, just to provide support. It was not meant for accountability. It was not meant to compare one school to another. It was not meant to compare district, district to district, and is not meant for the school performance report as the other one. As determined by the U.S. Department of Education, the administration of the Star Strong satisfied federal statewide laws, which we need to for funding, so they did satisfy those, that law. That does not, again, replace local standard-based benchmark, which is our Lincoln. It does not, and it does not replace the Spring 2022 New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. The NJSLA will come back this spring, just so you know. So that would be a test for accountability, and as we go through this presentation, I will explain a little bit more about what we're doing. So this is based on a subset of prioritized prior-year academic standards. So what they did is they took the standards for 2021, the school year, and of course, there was a lot of interruptions. Some schools, you know, we were remote for a little while, we were in a half-day schedule, so there was a lot of interruption and disruption, so they took last-year standards, and they prioritized those to provide a data point, a start data point for our instruction. For example, Grade 5 ELA is aligned to a subset of the New Jersey School Learning Assessment for Grade 4. So they took Grade 4, and this was the new standards for this test in September. It used released high-quality items from NJSLA, not the complete test, of course, just some of those items. It contained efficient question types to produce on-demand results for educators, so they can start immediately to provide support for the students, and it was administered very quickly. It was a 45- to 60-minute test. All right, as you know, the NJSLA is over a period of three, four days. This is a one-day, 45 to 60 minutes, and that was it. Okay, and then a little note there, the test design allowed for shortened testing time and immediate results. That was the purpose of this test. That was the purpose of this test. It did not cover the, the standards, okay, the depth. It did not cover the, the standards, okay, the depth of what the NJSLA usually is. It was just a very modified test at this point. So when we report the results, we have to consider the impact of COVID, of course. There was a lot of disruption over the year and a half, and we know that, and we know, and we knew then what to expect of this test. We knew that remote learning does not work as well as in-person learning, and it works even less for most vulnerable students or special education, our ELL students, and those students with difficulties learning. It's not the same. And so the expectation was there throughout the state. And I've been reading reports from the state, from many other districts, same thing happened in every district. However, the urban district suffered even more, because we know that remote learning was not happening there at all. Our teachers did their very best, and of course, our health and safety of our students was, was our number one priority. And then, of course, we had to do our instruction. So districts should not compare any individual student, school district, Star Strong data to any level data for Star Strong, nor should comparisons be made to the NJSLA, okay? This was not designed to predict any future performance. In the NJSLA, it was just used as a data point, a start data point for which we have to now, okay, oh, we've been doing, provide the remediation for those students who had learning loss during the remote learning experience. Okay, so Star Strong Assessments provided data points to support curriculum planning and revisit prerequisite concepts and skills. So that's what we've been doing, our coaches have been doing that, our ELA math and science coach have been doing that all fall long. They have been looking and planning and revisiting a lot of the curriculum that we have here. They evaluate the scope and sequence based on the distribution of student support needs as well. And provide professional learning supports for differentiation and scaffolding. There are two items in the agenda this evening. Both approving professional development for teachers, one is through the Rutgers Literacy Center, and the other one is shelter instruction protocol to help teachers differentiate instruction in the classroom, which is so necessary for multi-level learners, right? So that is what we're doing now. Chris? Okay, these are the numbers of students that took the test. Now, please remember, the NJSLA for us to be to, to meet the, the standards that they, they want, we need to meet 95% attendance in the test. This did not happen in the fall. And the reason for that is, don't forget, students were under quarantine for 10 days. The makeup period was very short. So right now, as you can see, the numbers are different there. It was a test for grades four through nine. And the, the, actually, the state was very confusing and conflicted. At one time, they said to nine, another time, they said to grade 10. Some district did grade nine, some districts did grade 10. But again, we called the state, they said, as long as you have your own benchmark assessments, that's fine, as long as you can measure, right? In some way, you're fine. So right there, and as you can see, the math, more students took it because it was course-related. It was not grade-related. So for example, geometry and algebra two, there are many high school students that take it. 10th, 11th grade, some 12th graders even. So it was taken by more students than the ELA and the science. And the science was only four grade levels that took the science. Grades four, I'm sorry, grades six, nine, and I believe 11 and 11, actually, three grade levels, because that was the total. So that was the, that was your science. So as you can see, the numbers are all, they're not the same. NJSLA, we have to meet 95% students taken. Here, you know, whatever students was, was available, was not quarantining. We had students quarantining 10 days, seven days, they were out, sick, what have you. So the numbers were not all there. Chris? Okay, here we, we, here we are. As, as I mentioned at the beginning, okay, this does not give us proficiency levels. This gives us support levels, okay? Where our students are is exactly what we expected. Our ELA students did better than our math, when you look at the math. But it's obvious, when there's disruption in math and you don't repetitive do math, what's going to happen? You're going to regress, right? You're really going to regress. With ELA, there's a lot more experience that happens. So the ELA is going to be better. So if you look at the percentages, the columns with the percentages, more support needed in grade four, 45%. Some support, 27. Less support needed, 28%. And of course, they came up with, with, with different levels. And then you go right down, fifth grade, 27, 30-some, and then 48, less support. And grade six, 48, 43%, and 22, some support, 35, less support. Less support means that they, they pretty much, you know, they did a good job with their learning, with their remote learning, they were able to maintain with less support. Okay, grade eight, and this will be on the website, just so everyone knows. If you, if you want to, you know, take this information, it will be on the website tomorrow. Okay, and all the way to grade nine, as you can see, grade nine actually had the most success. 49% need the less support. Grade five, 48%. So right there, we, we, you know, we see, again, it's very hard to predict. Okay, by grade levels, very hard. So that's your English Language Arts support levels, support levels, not proficiency, support levels. Chris? And here, just as I mentioned before, and it was expected, math was going to get the biggest hit, right? Grade four, more support, 61%. Some support, 24, 15%, 15% only less support. And if you go right down the column, you can tell. And that's where really our district took a hit. In math, again, because math is repetitive, you need to practice it all the time, right? And if you don't in person, then this is the result. Again, these numbers will be up on the website if you, if you want to take a little bit more time to analyze them. And here we have with the science, almost the same as math, more support needed. Okay, we need more support in the grades six, nine, and actually, 12th grade was also another grade level. Right, and then when we look at our most vulnerable students, we look at our economically disadvantaged, we look at our students with disabilities, we look at our ELL, English language learners, you can just tell that remote learning really did not work for these students. They need in-person, and that's what we find every day, to make sure that we are in-person every day. Hopefully, hopefully, there will be no more disruptions. Hopefully, we will be able to maintain full-day instruction in person. Things are getting better, and that's, that's why we need to be in-person learning. And then if you look at math, the numbers speak for themselves. Okay, so now, what are we doing to assist our students? And again, if you look at the little arrow there, that means that ELL did not meet the threshold. You need 20 or more students. It did not meet it for the English language learner, learners, they were either not here quarantining or they did not take the test for whatever reason. Okay, so they did not meet the science percentages. Chris? Okay, so what are we doing to assist our students? Over the past, I believe, four or five months, the board has been approving several programs after school, before school, lunchtime programs, approving professional development for teachers to assist students in learning, making sure our coaches are doing what they're supposed to be doing. We have coaches in math and ELA that provide our district with best practices, and they go into the classrooms, they assist teachers, they help teachers also pull students out that need it. And right there, we have adopted a few programs. Algebra for all initiative support, this is across all grade levels. You may think algebra at the kindergarten, yes. We start with some, some numerical factors for factoring, all the way from the kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. And then we, again, assist our students with algebra. Happy Numbers and Extra Math Implementation Support, these are programs that help assist students and support student learning. And we have a middle school intervention support system with our coaches, with our interventionists as well. We have math and reading interventionists, they go into the classrooms and they pull out students that may need the most small group instruction. Then if you look at ELA, we have in-class coaching for grades nine to 12. Implementation Support for Culturally Responsive Literacy Experiences and Instruction, which means that what I mentioned to you before, a SIUP program, a Shelter Instruction Protocol to help differentiate students that may be having difficulties learning language arts and, and English and so forth. And making it a little bit more responsive to those students, reflecting more of those students and engaging more our student body, okay? Math interventions, one-to-one individualized instruction, it's happening in every school building. Small groups, similar needs, extended day, we have now AM, PM, lunchtime support programs for math and language arts. And then ELA interventions are LLI, which is our Literacy Learning Interventions for grades three to five, and the phonetic awareness phonics interventions for grades one through kindergarten, first grade. So K through five are getting all of ELA interventions. We're using Lincoln, as I mentioned before, our benchmark testing guidance and preparation. We're using standard-based test creation at the high school. So the midterms are aligned with standards across all content areas now. And we're using data analysis support, which is data-driven instruction. We have the teachers looking at the data, and the data drives the instruction, whether it's whole class or differentiated instruction based on the data, okay? And then, of course, we're focusing on a standard-based district-wide and SEO alignment, student growth objective, which every student, every classroom, every teacher has a student growth objective. We are aligning our lessons based on that as well. Resources to differentiate instruction by standard, and that, that's a district, school, class, small group, individual. And then, of course, intervention programs in the classrooms as well. We're doing a lot in the classrooms, interventions, because you saw the numbers, right? We are pulling out students, but we're doing a lot more in the classroom, okay? We are giving our teachers the tool to be able to differentiate instruction, to provide small group instruction around the classroom and so forth. And we understand, and we know, and this is very, and it's, it's very important to me. We know that if students are not socially, emotionally, and mentally ready, no matter what academic programs we have in place, they're not going to be able to learn the way that they should. So mental health support, especially now, is critical if we want to make sure that our students catch up academically. It's critical. Our students have lived through anxiety, trauma, right? And we're still not out of this. So we have to make sure we provide students with the support, the mental health support that they need, so we can then translate to learning and instruction. So our elementary school classroom teachers utilize responsive classrooms. We've been doing that pre-COVID, but we really have stepped it up more. This, these are morning meetings for social connection with each student. Don't forget, during remote learning, what was missing? The social connections, right? It's not the same looking at a laptop and being in the classroom. Improve student engagement, we want students to talk about themselves, to talk about their day and so forth. And social, emotional, academic learning is the focus as well. The middle school benefit, benefits from the support of weekly individual and group counseling sessions contracted with local mental health agency, PROF 205. And we're probably going to expand that. They, they doing a good job, right now, we have another, the middle school, but we're probably going to expand it to the high school and to some elementary as well. We have seen the need, we are going to expand that. Additionally, Ms. Murphy at the middle school provides identified students with a social support group as well. High school students identified by school counselors, parents and teachers benefit from individual or group counseling from a counselor there, Ms. Cozador. And then educator program, and of course, we are providing our teachers with PD, okay, to address student and staff mental health concerns. Because don't forget, our staff also needs to be provided with some mental health support. If, don't forget, if our staff is not healthy, we cannot help our students, right? So that is critical as well. High school PD with caring contact, Ms. Clemo, to impart active listening skills and identify warning signs for students struggling with hopelessness and suicidal thoughts. And we've had a few. We've had a few. All right, parent programming and resources. There was an October parent guardian mental health training given by the local social worker, Ms. Palmer. And quarterly guidance testing newsletters go out with all kinds of different strategies for parents to use at home with their students. And what I'm asking the parents here, and, and hopefully, those that are watching at home, if you see your child with struggling with any social, emotional, mental health, please reach out to the school counselor. That's what they're there for. Please reach out, they will certainly address the, the situation, give you resources that, that you can, can attend or assist to, so please do that. Our INRS, which is our Intervention and Referral Services, referrals have increased, right, something that we expected. And district-wide, a larger number of students are receiving individualized academic counseling than in previous year. So we're doing whatever we can to help, and we're going to continue to. You're going to see the board agendas with more as we come up. Don't forget, we receive grants from the state and federal grants that we can use for this. It's a two, some of them are two-year grants. So we'll be able to provide these interventions over the next year and a half now, at this point. And hopefully, it will be extended as well, so we can provide students with the support that they need. And Chris, I believe that is all I have for everyone tonight. I don't know if the board to the school principal or your school counselor, they will be able to provide you with more information on, on some of these support, support groups. But just, it's not all dark, okay? There's optimism in this light at the end of the tunnel. We just did the Lincoln B test in math. Our scores have started too, and this is from September to now. We just did it in January, and we just, the scores are very quickly, they responded very quickly. We are just a few points from where we were two years ago, pre-COVID. So I am confident and I am hopeful that by the spring, we have been able to catch up a little bit more than we have. It's going to take time, but we are working towards that. And I think we have the right plan together with the coaches, with the interventionists, with the programs, with the support to help our students do the best they can. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. The star strong did go to the prior year, I mean, for obvious reasons. No, but we know, we know.
Thank you, Mr. Garito, for your report. As we move on, we'll move on to the agenda under Personnel, one through 12. Staff Appointments, Rescinding of Staff Appointment, Staff Retirement, Maternity Leave of Absent Extension Request. Number five, Revision of Medical Leave of Absence. Number six, Additional Athletic Coaches 2021-2022. Number seven, Home Instruction Instructors. Number eight, District Substitutes. Nine, Staff Resignation. Ten, High School, Middle School Additional Teachers in Classes and Revisions 2021 to 2022. Number 11, Revisions of Appointments. And number 12, Professional Development. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have any discussion, any item mentioned? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Caulstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Viamanti?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mix Infante?
Yes.
Ms. McCarr?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Ms. Cantella?
Yes.
And President Harms?
Yes.
All I.
Motion carries. Agenda items under Education, 13 through 18. 13 Conference Attendance Request. 14 Educational Programs. 15 Harassment, Intimidation, Bullying Incidents. 16 ESL Title III Summer Enrichment Program. 17 English Language Learner Three Year Program Plan. I guess it's a typo, it should have been 13 through 17, because business starts at 18. So it was 13 through 17. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Sorry? I didn't hear.
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Caulstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Viamanti?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mix Infante?
Yes, with an abstention from number 13.
Ms. McCarr?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Ms. Cantella?
Yes.
President Harms?
Yes.
All I.
Motion carries. Under Business Agenda, Addendum Number One, and then we'll go to 18 through 25. Addendum One, Secretary of Treasuries Report. 18, Approval of Bills. 19, Approval of Minutes. 20, Use of Buildings and Grounds. 21, Educational Services Contract. 22, Professional Services Contract. 23, Summer Camp Handbook. 24, Stale Check Cancellation. And 25, District Contracts for 2021 to 2022. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Caulstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Viamanti?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Infante?
Yes.
Ms. McCarr?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Ms. Cantella?
Yes.
President Harms?
Yes. Motion carries. We will now go on to continuing business. Do we have any continuing business? Hearing none, we move on to new business, and one item under new business is that our meeting is for February 22nd. I'd like to change it to February 15th. If that's all right, I'd like to have a motion to change it to February 15th.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice President Caulstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Viamanti?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mix Infante?
Yes.
Ms. McCarr?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Ms. Cantella?
Yes.
President Harms?
Yes. Thank you for moving the meeting date. At this point, we will go on to the second part of the public portion. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak, please come up, state your name and address, and you are allowed three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evenings. Joe Signarola, Jr., 625 Woodland Ave. I'd like to give you guys a little good news. Tonight, oh, boy, trying to keep some names here. A good thing happened at the middle school today. A woman called that her son was at a rec game last night to middle school and lost her gold chain. The staff did what they had to do to find it. This afternoon, Drew Graves, employee of the district, found this gold chain. The parent called back and said she prayed to St. Anthony and it would be found. She is a graduate of Rosel Park, and it's on the form. Just want to let everybody know, it's a beautiful thing where, and she really gets and say, good people still exist. And she just wanted to duly acknowledge it, and I figured I'd come up here to share it with you guys tonight. So it's a nice thing to Mr. Graves and the staff of the middle school. So, and one other quick thing, look, last month, you guys had this little election process every year. Being a member of the board for four years, I think you folks, if you can, consider to have a different way of process of voting, like putting a ballot for names on a piece of paper. I don't know if it's allowed, but my four years as a board member, I never liked it. I think it could go smoother. I'm not sure it's allowed, but I think your policy group should look into that. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, just for the comment on that. Even if we put it on a ballot, even if we put it on a piece of paper, you still have to call out who voted for who. It's the law.
It's the law through the school district?
It's the law.
I'm not sure if that's true, but anyway, look, I'm involved with many organizations, and there's nowhere where you have to put your name up on vote for Mickey Mouse or Minnie Mouse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Cindy Mago, 433 Walnut, promise I'm not complaining about anything today. I actually just wanted to say thank you for getting rid of those horrible black dividers in the lunchroom at the middle school. My daughter came home and said they have nice clear ones, so she wasn't too happy they were smaller. I said, just be happy that they're clear, that's all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this time, I'll close the public portion. We don't have anything for closed. Is there any comments for the good of the order, for the good of the board? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
President Harms, I just wanted to, oh, wow, this is hot, acknowledge.
Zeke, can you take this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's fuzzy. I just want to acknowledge Principal Hanau and the students that they acknowledged today. It was remarkable, as someone who was on my elementary school, ALDEAN Student Council, it's just wonderful to see them participating and to really applaud them for their efforts. It was lovely to see them and their families here tonight.
Thank you.
President Harms, yes, I, as a Robert Gordon parent, I just want to say thank you to Principal Hanau and the work they've been doing there.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll have no discussion? Any hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.